So this August meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education is called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The schedule of the regular meetings of the Board was adopted at the Board meeting on January 6, 2020. The schedule and notice of said meetings have been posted and are maintained on the interior wall of the exterior door to the school administration offices, 200 Lee's Avenue, mailed to the retrospect in the Courier Post and are filed with the clerk of the borough of Collingswood. All of the foregoing has been done within the time required by law. Please join us if you wish for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Kayden?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Right here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Severino?
Here.
Mr. Stott?
Here.
Mr. Stott? Ms. Wood?
Here. Okay, the Board this evening had an executive session. Executive sessions are held to discuss material that is protected due to confidentiality's. And so I believe we need motion to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And is there a second? Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And this evening, we have no committee of the whole. So we will move to Section 4 of the agenda, which is a presentation from Dr. Oswald. It's an update on the return to school plan.
Talking and no one's hearing me. There we go. I'm muted. So just so everyone knows, if you go to our website, and this will be exactly the same thing in Oakland, if you're an Oakland family, if you go to our website, at the top of the website will be a tab or a button that says COVID-19 updates, exactly the same in Oakland, just about in the same spot. When you click on that, it's going to pull up every single news item that we have tagged as a COVID-19 news item. Today, we posted, under today, under this update, which was Friday's update, I posted a video, which I'll show you here in a second. I'm not going to play the video, but there's a video here that pretty much explains exactly what I'm going to explain in the next several minutes. But that video is also posted, that went up today. And then down here is our food service information. So our food service provider provided us, gave us all the information for food service for the 2021 school year that is also posted on here. And moving forward, everything that is COVID-19 related will be posted under this tab. So now I'm going to walk back to the, minimize some of this, I'm going to walk back to the document that was sent out on Friday, Friday afternoon. And I'm going to just walk through, rather than doing presentations and PowerPoints or Google Slide presentations, I'm going to walk through this document so everyone understands our thinking as we released this updated plan last Friday. So September 1st through 4th, as has been the case for about a month, those four days are for our staff training, staff introduction, introducing our staff to our new procedures, as well as the safety precautions we have in place.
Too much feedback. The safety precautions we have in place, as well as some additional training on remote education, remote learning. So that's the first four days of September. There are no students, there's no students or no students in the building, or no students, no remote teaching, no remote learning happening September 1st through 4th. September 8th through 18th at the elementary level, and 8th through 25th at the middle school and high school level is a time we're going to spend getting to know our students, as well as getting to know the procedures that we're going to follow as we come into our buildings. So preschool and elementary school teachers will schedule small group conferences, one-on-one conferences with, with their students and their families. So that's going to happen over those, at the elementary level, over those two weeks, September 8th to 18th. And then at the middle school and high school, it'll start over three weeks. Three weeks will start on the first week we're back, which is September 8th, the day after Labor Day. And then the following two weeks, which are full weeks, we will get to meet, that first week, our incoming sixth graders, who we know will be new to our building, and then our incoming ninth grader. So one thing that we've heard over and over from our families, and loud and clear, is the importance of having some type of an orientation. So we're going to have that for those students, our incoming sixth graders and our incoming ninth graders. When we do that, we're going to split our groups into about half the size of a team, of a blue or a gold team. So for this week and a little bit later on in the schedule, we're going to have a blue A, a blue A and a blue, a blue B team, and then a gold A and a gold B team. That will be very, kind of a very intermediate step. It's not going to, we're not going to keep that configuration for very long. But as we schedule the middle school and high school students to come back into the building for their orientation, for about an hour in the afternoon after their learning, we're going to keep that configuration, we're going to use that configuration of the gold A and the gold B, blue A, blue B, gold A, gold B. October 28th through the 2nd, we're going to try to get into the rhythm of remote learning and establishing best practices for remote learning and establishing our classroom culture and all those things that make the school year run as smoothly as possible. If you've turned on the news in the last, I don't know, three, four months, you've heard the complete expectation that at some point in the late fall or winter, we're going to go back to complete remote learning. Of course, there's no guarantee that'll happen, but if it does, we want to make sure, should we have to do that, that we are going to, that we'll be well-prepared. We have built a schedule that we'll look at in a second. We've built a schedule that we believe will allow that to happen without much interruption at all. So it should be rather seamless. If we should have to do that, we certainly hope, once we get the students back in, that we won't need to do that. But if we do, we're going to be ready for it. As we move into October, and I was a little bit hesitant to even send this calendar out, but as we move into October, it's going to be our intention to bring our students back into our building slowly. So we will have, I think the, I think it's October 5th, I believe, we'll look at that in a second, but beginning October 5th, we're going to bring our students back in into those hybrid modes, but we're going to do so in just a little bit more slowly, using the gold A, blue A, blue B, gold A and gold B teams, to really bring our students in very slowly, so that we can test out our procedures, make sure that what we've planned is working. It all works beautifully on paper. When we involve real people, we want to make sure that we roll it out slowly, so that we know for sure that it's going to work. So that'll happen the October 5th through October 16th. And again, that depends heavily on data. If we see school districts in our region, maybe not even in New Jersey, but even, you know, in our, in our Pennsylvania, Delaware, New York areas, or other New Jersey districts that are opening a little more quickly, bringing kids back a little more quickly, if they see a spike in their numbers, in their cases, positive cases, those types of things, we're going to reevaluate that. But for right now, the very tentative plan is to begin to bring our students back October 5th to the 16th, and then hopefully by October 19th, if everything goes well, we are going to roll into the hybrid plan that we presented, I guess, 20 days ago or so, or maybe almost a month ago, to that hybrid plan that we presented, where we have half of our students in the gold team. So at that time, on October 19th, we drop, we drop the A and B designation permanently, hopefully. And we roll our blue team back on Monday, Tuesday, for a typical week, and our gold team back on Thursday, Friday, Wednesday will remain a remote day. So one thing that we've been asked over and over again throughout the spring and certainly over the summer, is to have as much synchronous instruction going on as possible. That basically just means that your students, that the students will have live, quote, FaceTime with their teachers throughout the day. It does not mean that the teacher's going to put on a performance like they're on stage, that's not what that means. But it does mean that the teacher will be there to interact with kids throughout the day during a scheduled time. So we will get to the schedule in a minute, but during that scheduled time, teachers will be available to work with kids and teach kids. The actual mini lesson, which is the bit of instruction, the new content, the new material that's being introduced, that actual mini lesson will very likely be recorded, and that's fine. Instructionally speaking, it is a much, there's much more benefit to having students working in small groups, working with, with their peers, as well as working with the teacher, to work through some of the problems and some of the challenges they face with their instruction, rather than having the teacher deliver a performance. So the performance will likely be recorded for the most part, and then the students will have interaction, time to interact with their teacher. And if there's more than one teacher in the room, or there's an instructional assistant in the room, time to interact with those folks as well. So that's going to happen here. That's our plan. So because the school day will be happening, because, because remote school will be happening during the school day, and as per our schedule, we will take attendance daily. We are asking our families if they are. We know we're going to have families, this is not a surprise, and it will not come as a surprise, but we're going to have families that for one reason or another cannot be in attendance during the designated time. We understand that. What we want to do is provide as much normalcy as possible to as many students as possible. And one thing that, that many of our families have asked for is that, that kind of designated schedule, so that they can get used to that. But we also know, the more strict that schedule is, the more families we're going to have who probably can't meet that for one reason or another. So we're going to ask those families to reach out at the elementary school, preschool, elementary school level, please reach out to your principal or your building administrator. At the secondary, middle school, high school level, please reach out to your counselor. We will work with you to try to make, develop a system that works best. So this is not meant to be punitive at all. We're just trying to promote some form of consistency and, you know, as normal as normal can be right now. For our students that have special learning needs, or English language learners, our students with special needs, we're going to work with our teams, our child study teams and our ELL teams when they arrive back at the beginning of September, and begin to introduce those students back into our building as soon as possible, as well as invite students either remotely or in person, to take advantage of our related services, which here, our list is OTBT speech, also includes counseling services. But we're going to have discussions with families to see, you know, some families want that to be in person. We did some of that over the summer in a small scale, and it worked relatively well. We did also have families who over the summer preferred to stay remote, and that's fine too. I don't know that I said it up above, but every time I say bringing students back, so you're probably going to say 10 more times throughout this, when I say bringing students back, any family that has chosen an all-remote model just stays all-remote, that's fine. We're not, we're not demanding that anyone come back. If you're not comfortable, you don't come back. So I'm probably not going to repeat that line over and over, but, you know, that's, that should be understood. If you've chosen an all-remote model, then just stay in all-remote, and we will work with you, or, you know, you'll just be home while the teachers are working with you. Establishing norms, so part of the, you know, making our, our school year, or as long as we have to follow this schedule, part of making that, the school year as normal as possible is going to be to establish norms in our classrooms. But we do think that we have some universal norms, and those universal norms are basically treating this school year as if it's as normal a year as possible. So, you know, we walk in, going into September, hopefully kids will get excited about coming back to school again, as they typically do. Establish a sleeping schedule, time to go to bed, a time to wake up, wake the kids up, have them get cleaned up or shower, or whatever your routine is in the morning, get dressed. We are asking the kids to get dressed like they're going to school, because if you're dressed and ready for school, I'm not saying we'll never have a pajama day, but every day shouldn't be pajama day. So establishing that, establishing that those norms will be important. Grab something to eat for breakfast, and then find a nice place in your home for your child or children to work, where they can work throughout their school day, and, you know, that'll be their own personal school space or office space for the work that they do. We're asking our families to be giving our kids the, you know, the encouragement to try to take ownership of their own learning, obviously a little more difficult with the real young guys, but as they begin to grow through upper elementary and middle and high school, taking ownership of that learning, understanding that this is new to all of us, it's as new to your teachers as it is to our students. So we're going to ask that our teachers, we're going to ask that our students, you know, be willing to take those risks and develop that agency for their own learning. Some frequently asked questions down here at the bottom. If assignments, if they have not happened, if you have not received them yet, will go out by this Friday for, at the elementary level. If your child's Chromebook is not currently working, please reach out like now, tonight, tomorrow. If you're on the call and you could mute yourself, that would be appreciated. We're getting a lot of feedback here. When should I expect to hear about my child with special needs? I'm sorry, let me go back. Question about activities and sports. Right now, our activities, our non-athletic activities are limited, but if your child is participating in athletics, you are certainly, should be well-aware of that by now, particularly at the high school level. And those activities will go on, following NJSI guidelines, which as of today at least, have not changed. And I believe we even reinforced last week that is their plan to move on beginning, starting the beginning of October with a sports schedule. So it does not matter whether you, we are remote, or we are moving into hybrid, or you have chosen full-remote. None of that matters. If you are interested in taking, taking part in an athletic activity at the middle school or high school, those will be available to you. Your child with special needs or an ELL student should expect to hear from somebody on the child study team or a teacher after September 1st. And free and reduced-priced meals, student, I'm sorry, students who are eligible for free and reduced-price meals will have access to those meals, and that schedule went out earlier today. So those meals will be available Wednesday between 12 noon and 2:00 p.m., as well as between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. for families to pick up. They do require that you order, place an order for the meals the Friday, by the Friday prior, so that we are, we are really upgrading the food service and upgrading the meals as, over and above what we did in the spring. So it's important that we have everything that we need to make sure that we meet the needs of our families. I'm going to go over this schedule. I'm not going to go over all three sections. If you can understand one, I'm sure that you can follow the others. One thing that has changed, not a drastic change, but for the couple of weeks that we do the blue A and blue B schedule, so we break our blue team into two separate groups, we ran the numbers today on our, on our alphabet, and actually, the blue A group, for the most part, are going to be families whose last name begin with A through D. E through LE is going to be the blue B group. So nobody in here is changing group. If you're blue, you're still blue. The gold group, last names LI through Q, just about splits it in half, and the gold group, the gold B group is going to be R through Z. The last names are through Z. If you are in a family that has two or more last names within the council, we have everybody assigned. So these are very generic letters, last name, letters of last names. If you have a Williams and an Adams in the same house, and, you know, if you're all in the same team, and you are assigned to the Adams team, so you're going to come in. But we have a list assigned, we have a list that assigns everybody to a kind of a sub-team, a gold A, gold B, blue A, blue B. So your administrators will be able to give you to that, and they will give you that information, they'll get that information to you. These are kind of our very generic breakdowns, but that's going to be the same, whether you're in preschool or 12th grade, these are the letters. Taking a look at our schedules, preschool and elementary are identical except by 15 minutes in the morning. So our preschoolers are going to come in 15 minutes later in the morning than our elementary students. September 8th through the 18th is when we work with our preschool students in the morning. They'll be followed up by some independent learning assignments, and then our individual student family orientations with the teachers are going to happen during the time slots that you see designated there. That'll take place during the first and the second week of school. During the third and fourth week of school, we're going to really move into some remote learning, get some practice with that, establish the routines and the procedures, because whether you are in person or remote later on, we're going to follow many of these same routines and procedures. So we're going to spend a couple of weeks getting really good at those. We move into October, these two dates are covered in the, in the calendar above, under September as well. October 5th through the 16th, we're going to ask, that we, 5th through the 16th, we're going to start to bring our blue A and blue B groups in, as well, as well as our gold A and gold B groups, we're going to bring those students in. There are some more groups to test out our procedures. Same thing the following week. And then finally, if all goes well, numbers stay where they are, maybe numbers improve a little bit in the area, we begin to move directly into our hybrid approach that we have talked about previously, which is our blue team and our gold. So for the board members, as of this point, are there any, anybody have any questions?
Scott, Mary, I have a quick question. Can you hear me?
I can. Yep.
Okay. So you said there's going to be the recorded mini lesson, right?
Right.
And then for the rest, for the rest of the time, the teachers will be with the students somehow virtually, or is that set up?
So we will have, the students will be in a class, or in a classroom, whether they're in second grade or 10th grade, they're going to be in that classroom, and the teachers will work with a group of students. They may, within the virtual environment, they may take a group of three or four students and go into a breakout room, it's called a breakout room, with those students, to help them through a certain area. If the full class is struggling with something, that's the opportunity also for the teacher to address the full class and maybe identify anything that is, you know, clear of anything that's unclear for the group in general. But if I find, as a former math teacher, if I find that I have three or four kids who are struggling with a certain concept, I can, I can give the rest of my students an assignment to work on and pull that group for three or four or five minutes into a breakout room and work directly with them, so that we're not bothering others and they're not bothering us, and we can really get to the, you know, to the exact need. Anybody else? Board members?
Any other questions from board members?
Okay. The, once we go hybrid, did we get to the point of going hybrid?
I'm sorry, Scott, I'm sorry. Whoever has the child, I can't hear it all, except for the child that's singing and talking. So if someone is aware.
Because I can't mute you. So once we move to the hybrid mode, we are, obviously, we have a period of time, which is necessary, isn't necessary in remote, but we have a period of time where there'll be time for students to enter the buildings and exit the buildings, are, that will be a half hour before school day begins, and then for 15 minutes after the school day ends. The only thing that I'm going to, I'm going to remove this person, so that we can get rid of that noise. And I think I'm going to point out now, is moving into the middle school and high school schedule, there's one section here, which looks like it's a mistake, but it is not. When we move into October, and we move from October 5th through the 16th, here, our blue A group comes in and they follow, those students that come in that day will follow an ABCD schedule. The students who are home will do the same, they'll just do it from home. The following week, the blue A group comes in again, the next time they come in person, and we are following an EFGH schedule. So by the end of this two-week time ferry, this, these students who have been in person will see all of their teachers, if you're not familiar with middle school and high school, we have eight periods, they're labeled A through H, they will see periods ABCD, EFGH. So this, this looks like it backwards, it flips here, it does flip, but it flips, there's a reason it flips, and it's on purpose. Other than that, I think you'll find the schedules to be identical. Obviously, middle school and high school schedules are a little bit different, because they have scheduled periods. So magically, an ABCD day, periods ABC and D meet, EFGH, periods EFG and H meet, and then Wednesdays are what we call all eight days, those are days for the teachers to catch up with all the students. So we will run a full schedule that day, each period's about 25 minutes long, but the students will catch up with, the students will see all of their teachers that day. So this ABCD will be typically, on a normal five-day week, will be a Monday and a Thursday. This is a Tuesday and a Friday, EFGH, and this will be pretty much every Wednesday. All right. Any questions? Okay. I'm going to flip back to the meeting, Fiona, and you can take over.
Thank you, Dr. Oswald. Section 5 on our agenda is where we would normally list future dates and miscellaneous information. I just ask you to please continue to refer to our website and monitor communications from the district for any important dates. Item 6 on our agenda is routine board business, and I believe we are approving the minutes of the June 2020 regular meeting, the July 27th special meeting, and the August 11th special meeting. Are those dates correct, Ms. Coleman?
We're not, I don't believe we have the August up yet.
Okay. So then we're looking for approval for the June regular meeting and the July 27th regular meeting.
Correct. Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those meetings?
Moved. No.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
That's just an all aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Section 7 on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. Please state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items that are listed on the agenda. Additional, more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through the appropriate staff members and administrators. So if you have a public comment, please type your name into the chat.
Elizabeth Yucus, if you could type your question, and Mr. Jacob Lehman, if you could just hold off for a second, I'll call on you next.
Can I, can I just read it? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Yucus. I live at 17 East Homestead Avenue. I wanted to say I applaud Collingswood for pivoting to a fully-remote model for the first few weeks of the school year. Keeping our kids home will be challenging for many families, including mine, but with community spread in our area being the highest in state, it's important that we do all we can to keep everyone safe. However, I understand that our teachers may be required to report to buildings to carry out virtual instruction, and I'm speaking tonight to respectfully ask for kindness and flexibility on this point. Although it's great to give teachers access to their materials in classrooms, some individuals will feel and be safer if they can continue working from home. Further, employees with kids of their own are faced with securing costly childcare, or alternatively, bringing their children to work with them. As a former Collingswood teacher, I don't think I would be able to serve my students to the best of my ability if I had to teach and simultaneously look after my almost six-year-old son in my classroom. Allowing staff the option to continue working remotely would make it infinitely easier for employees to do their jobs effectively, and I want our educators and staff to be as effective as possible. We know that the more people that are in a space, the harder it is to maintain social distancing. Therefore, it puts our staff at risk to mandate that they all work in their classrooms. Allowing staff flexibility on whether and when to report to buildings during remote instruction is the right choice to make at this time. Our staff members are loved and appreciated by the community, and I urge you to prioritize their safety and consider honoring their professionalism by, again, considering allowing them to work remotely if they choose. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Yucus.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman, can you, you want to speak or?
I'll just do it all, if that's fine. My name is Jacob Lehman. I'm at 701 Loomwood Avenue. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Two-part question. One, I understand under Governor Murphy's Executive Order 175, that school districts have to cite reasons why they're unable to meet the state's metrics in order to move to an all-remote instructional program. I want to know what metrics Collingswood indicated that it could not meet, and then sort of as a follow-up to that, I'd like to know whether the State Department of Education has approved the request to go to all-remote instruction, and if it's rejected it or asked for revisions, I'd like to know what those are.
Okay, I can answer that. We have received nothing from the Department of Education on what type of certification we have to submit. I can say, based upon the Executive Order 175, there, our biggest challenge is going to be staffing our buildings to allow, to ensure that we can meet, or we can, I should say, implement all the safety procedures and safety precautions that we have, that we've planned. So the best plan on the planet isn't going to work if we don't have the people in place to do it. So the best plan on the planet isn't gonna work if we don't have the people in place to do it and, and, you know, to implement that plan. And right now, we have about 29 or 30, as of today, staff members who are, for one reason or another, under, under several different options that are available to them, unable to report to work, at least to start the school year. So we have not received anything from the Department of Ed to, you know, I've heard the same thing that everybody's heard in terms of what we have to do. What we haven't seen is anything, anything from the Department of Ed that tells us how to do that. We asked that question, I asked that question as late as 4 o'clock on Friday, and I was told it's coming. I heard from another colleague today that he was in a meeting with the interim commissioner, and the response to the similar question was, we're working on it. When that'll come, the Department, you know, maybe doesn't know that school's around the corner, I'm not sure. But it is frustrating, it's frustrating for me to watch those above us and just sit and wait. But the second question, I think it's something to do with the approval process, the approval process. We did turn in our initial hybrid plan back probably a month ago now. Heard nothing about it, I do know folks who have had their plans returned for pretty minimal changes, to be honest, but they did have their plans returned, our plan was not returned. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but we have not gotten a return, a return plan, asking for revisions. We have not gotten an approval. Probably the number one question that I've been asked over the last week or so. Remote learning, same thing. We submitted, I submitted the remote learning plan that, and then I shared it with everybody, the community, the parents, and we shared on Friday, I submitted that this morning. Have not, obviously not received any feedback on that yet, but if we do, we will, we will address those, whatever points they have, whatever issues they have. So, you know, to say that this entire process has been chaos would be an understatement. So that's the information I can give you. I wish I could give you something more specific, but we are waiting on the department to get back to us with anything good, bad, or indifferent. We have not, we have received zero feedback.
Appreciate that answer. Sort of, am I entitled to a follow-up or no?
No, go ahead.
Okay, dude, yes, no, I can't hear you?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, just one short follow-up. So you sent out your August 18th letter, you know, the letter that essentially indicates that you're gonna go to an all-remote instructional program. And part of that letter, you indicate, and you've said that here tonight, doctor, that, you know, you're gonna, you have the hope to go back to a hybrid plan at some point in October. Your October 18th letter says, if data and staffing permit, you address staffing, I appreciate that. Data, what specific metrics would be acceptable to you or to the, you know, for you to recommend that the district go to hybrid instruction? And what metrics are you looking at? I mean, you know, you made reference to the fact that maybe some other schools saw a spike, but I'm just not sure what that means. So I just like a little bit more clarification on what specific metrics you're looking at.
I can't tell you what specific metrics we're gonna look at, we're gonna work with the county health department. But I suspect when schools begin to reopen in a week or so, two weeks, we have to, I suspect we're gonna see some fluctuation with the numbers. If we don't, that's amazing, that's great. And we will move forward with our plan and hopefully, you know, I think part of our process here is to build people's confidence that the safety precautions we have in place will work. That's one of the reasons that we are looking to bring folks back into the school so that they know. I've been in every day since March 13th. We've, you know, I work in an office, I don't work in a classroom, but I work in an office. But we have been the central spot for anyone in the community who needs to come in. We've given out close to $20,000 worth of gift cards, and people have come to the office to pick them up. And we've had interaction in a safe environment with folks. And, you know, we've done well, we fare very well. So I think we can expect similar results with the precautions that we have in place with our, you know, with our students and our staff members. But I just don't think we're willing to take that risk without taking it slowly. So we're gonna look at what happens in some of the districts around us and see if there's an uptick in the, in the numbers. We certainly can all turn on the news and watch other districts around the country that are opening and seeing, you know, there's some dramatic results, you know, dramatic things that we can see. So we'll work with our county health department. We are certainly not going to be, we are not the only district in the area that's choosing this option. So we'll work with those districts and take a look at, that they, you know, what they see. I'm certain that come October, we're gonna have a lot of people who are very happy with whichever decision we make, and we're gonna have some people who are not happy with whichever decision we make.
I appreciate that, but can you point to any specific metric? You say you're gonna work with the county health department, but I assume the county health department isn't blocking schools that are choosing to use their hybrid instructional model from opening, so what metrics are you gonna look at?
No, I can't point to, my metric right now is my gut, and my gut tells me we're gonna see a fluctuation.
So there's no metric? Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Mr. Mason, you're up next. Rhodes, I'm not sure if you're talking, I can't hear you, or, sorry about that. Trying to look for you in this screen here.
Dr. Oswald, perhaps Mr. Mason could type his question while the next person speaks?
Mr. Mason, if you wanna type your, oh, I found you here, see, you're not muted. If you, if you wanna type your question, and then I'll switch over to Ms. Powers, and then we'll come back to you, if that's all right? Thanks. Ms. Powers?
Hi, Dr. Oswald, a couple of questions. One, I wanted to know that Collingswood is scheduled for the SATs on October 3rd. So I checked the list, I checked the list daily, you guys are not amongst one of the schools that had canceled with College Board. Do you know what the plan is?
I do not, but I will let you know tomorrow.
Awesome. And then my second question, well, really is not a question. Just wanted to kinda give kudos to the high school team for their support of Mason during these unprecedented times that we've all experienced last year. But keeping him afloat and getting him to the point with homebound instruction, he was able to remotely successfully close out all of his key subjects, and we're just working on the other ones. But just hats off to them, they did a remarkable job and just thought that they should be recognized for supporting him. It's already hard enough to support Mason, and then now we add COVID on top of it, which made it incredibly tough, and they really rose to the occasion, so just wanted to say thank you.
And Mason's a senior now, right?
Yeah, so he'll be, he'll be a senior this year.
All right, congratulations. All right, oh, Mr. Mason, we got you, up, from one Mason to the other, here we go. Middle school and high school students be checking into Zoom meeting with individual teachers, and how will those meetings be sent? Yes, the middle school and high school teachers will, the students, I'm sorry, will be using, checking into their lessons with Zoom, and I would imagine they will be sent via Google Classroom. The address. Good, all right. Okay. Dr. Pepper?
It was me, not her.
You, well, her name comes up.
Okay, well, I wanna know, so last year, well, I guess this past year, when we went remote, it was like Fridays didn't have really required office hours, it was more like optional to go on. Are Wednesdays like the same with that, like how it's not attendance, or is it like totally different?
It will be totally different, you'll have school five days a week.
Okay.
We'll probably make you happy, maybe not some others.
Are they checking attendance in every class? Do we have to have like video on, or is it just like, like how, like?
So you will have to be present in the class for them to take attendance. I think it's gonna be up to the teacher to work on the whole video thing, but, you know, we certainly don't wanna make anybody uncomfortable.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. Jill Chestnut and Matt Collins, I think you're next, or next?
Yes, just wanted to know, how will you legally address IEPs for the month of September, specifically for students who Zoom doesn't work or students that have one-to-ones assigned to them that need them in the classroom?
That's a, that's a question that should go to Dr. Whitehouse or to the case manager. Because that's, every, every student with an IEP is different. So we will work with those students on a one-to-one basis to, you know, do our best to meet their needs as best we can. But that's, you know, I, I couldn't give an answer, I've not seen the IEP, so it would be irresponsible for me to give an answer to that.
Oh, I left your check, your check's on the stairs.
All right. Mrs. Henry, I think that's it. We will, we'll have another chance later on in the meeting, but I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Oswald. And I do wanna say that the board appreciates everyone's commentary and questions and the decisions that were made. For the best plan for student instruction and health in mind, we're certainly made with care. And although this plan won't fit perfectly the needs of all families, your questions and concerns are essential in our decision-making process going forward. So I wanted to thank everyone for their thoughts. Section eight on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Oswald, you're on again.
One second, let me get stuff out of the way here. So in June 2020, we had 2,234 students in Collingswood. That was about 100 and some, 127, it looks like, over the June of the previous year. I would suspect most of those were incoming preschool students. There were no safety, obviously, no school safety reports, we haven't been in school in a while. Very fortunately, no suspension report, and there have been no anti-Bullying Report, no anti-HIV cases since we left for remote learning and our policies. There are no first readings of policy.
Thank you. We have, obviously, we don't have our students to report in section nine, so we'll move right on to section 10, which is our report from our business administrator, Board Secretary, Ms. Coleman.
Good evening, everybody. The audit has been completed on 19/20 school year. So this evening, I have June and July's financial statements, report of transfers, school board secretaries' report, activities report, and food service financial statements, all ready for your review and approval. In addition, I have a listing of purchase orders and a listing of warrants, warrants that were paid in June and July on your behalf, as well as a list of warrants to be paid tomorrow on your behalf. And one other item, as you know, Mr. Hurd is retiring. Mr. Hurd's replacement, Mr. Keith Higginbotham, I believe he's on this call. I did ask him to kinda try and log in, and he's sitting down there waving to everybody, but he is on the call. So when you see him around the district, hopefully in the future, stop and say hello. But I welcome Mr. Keith Higginbotham to Collingswood School District. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, and welcome, Mr. Higginbotham. The board looks forward to meeting you. Our next section on the agenda is our Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee Report, presented by Christine Sheridan, Celia, the chairperson.
Good evening. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. This evening, we have at numbers 11.02 through 11.9, various approvals. 11.02, approval of transfers listed above. The Board Secretary certifications of no over expenditures at 11.03. 11.04, the Board certification of no over expenditures. 11.05, the approval of the Secretary and Treasurer reports. 11.06, approval of student activities reports. 11.07, approval of the Food Service Financial Statement. 11.08, approval of purchase orders, warrant approvals at 11.09. 11.10 is approving of textbook disposal, textbook disposal from Good Shepherd School and various, their contract approvals. 11.11, Oxford Consulting Services. 11.12, the preschool educational, I'm sorry, preschool education program, the Head Start grantees. The ACES program is at 11.13. 11.14 is approval for applying for the Digital to Divide Grant. 11.15 is moving on the recommendation of the superintendent to approve settlement agreement for a student versus Collingswood BOE at AL as per a settlement agreement. 11.16, a move on the recommendation to approve Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. 11.17, Elementary and Secondary Education Act Formula sub-grant. 11.18 is moving for the approval of the Title I budget. Various contracts are coming up. 11.19 for ParaPlus translations. 11.20 for Laurel Therapy, providing occupational therapy services. The Yes Tutoring Services is at 11.21. And at 11.22, we're seeking approval for the standard operating procedures for the business office.
Thank you for that, had a technical issue there. We are seeking approval for items 11.27, 11.01 through 11.22? Yeah, 11, 11.22. Is there a motion for that?
Someone, this is staff.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members?
This is Henry, I'm gonna log out here and then come back into the public side of this, so just don't mind me.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second, Ms. Coleman?
Yes, we do.
Okay, questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Wood? Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Section 12 is the Curriculum Committee Report, which will be presented by Chairperson Reagan Kayden.
And tonight, we are looking for approval, skipping over items 12.02 to 12.04 because we don't have any field trips, so it's very short tonight. 12.05 is for an out-of-district placement for a student to go to the dance program in Gloucester County Institute of Technology. And 12.06 is approval for an out-of-district home instruction placement. So looking for, for approval of items, I guess we're approving all of them even, so 12.02 to 12.06.
Okay, is there a motion for 12.02 through 12.06?
No.
And is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, and I just wanna update, the approval item says 12.05, something must have been added today. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna update this to 12.06, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. And is there, the roll call, please?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And Ms. Henry?
Yes. Dr. Oswald and Ms. Coleman, are we ready to move on to the Personnel Committee Report?
Yes.
So that report will be presented by Chairperson Nina Miller.
Good evening. We are tonight seeking approval for 13.02, which is a retirement. 13.03 to 13.09, a series of resignations. 13.10 to 13.12, FMLA approvals. 13.13, contract issuance for an Assistant Builders and Grounds Director effective September 8th, 2020 through October 31st, 2020, followed by a transfer to Director November 1st. 13.14, English teacher contract at the high school. contract at the high school. 13.15, school psychologist contract effective September 1. 13.16, a contract for a middle school math teacher. 13.17, a contract for a kindergarten teacher at Sharp School. 13.18, a contract for a secretary at Zane North. 13.19, a contract for a part-time preschool nurse. 13.20, a contract for a part-time school psychologist. 13.21, a contract for a part-time middle school special education teacher. 13.22, approval for communications graphic designer. 13.23, contract for Buildings and Grounds electrician. 13.24, long-term substitute contract at the middle school. 13.25, a revised elementary school teacher contract. 13.26, revised middle school art technology teacher contract. 13.27, revised middle school language arts teacher contract. 13.28, permanent substitutes. 13.29, revised contract for secondary teachers as a result of teaching overload. 13.30, responsive classroom professional development to be held remotely for all school, for all Sharp School teachers. 13.31, approval for all elementary school teachers to work the 2020-2021 Academic Enrichment Club. 13.32, a middle school non-athletic stipends. 13.33, revised contracts for middle school coaches. 13.34, high school non-athletic stipends. 13.35, a contract issuance for high school coaches. 13.36, the 2020-2021 Rowan Clinical Internships. 13.37, unpaid speech pathology internships from August to December 2020. 13.38, revised 2020 middle school curriculum development. 13.39, approval for the 2020 high school curriculum development. 13.40, staff members' children to attend, approval for staff members' children to attend school for the 2020-2021 school year. 13.41, 2020 summer program additional staff. 13.42 through 13.44, we are looking for approval for elementary, middle school, and high school staff to conduct remote hybrid training. 13.45, approval for the 2020 summer professional learning community. 13.46, 2020 child study team staff as needed. 13.47, 2020 child study team staff for shared services with Oakland. 13.48, approval for Zane North Secretary to work 15 days over the summer. 13.49, the 2020 Buildings and Grounds Summer Staff Workers Revision. 13.50, substitutes and tutors for the 2020-2021 school year. 13.51, travel expense report for August 2020. And we are seeking approval for items 13.01 to 13.51.
Oswald, did we have any additional items, or was it just up to 13.51?
Yeah, thank God, just up to 13.51.
Is there a motion for those items?
No move.
And a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm just checking that I have those two on my list removed, 55 and 56.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for asking that clarifying question. Any other questions from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yeah.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes, except for the items marked with a single or a double asterisk where I abstain.
Ms. Henry?
Yes. The next section on our agenda is section 14, Policy and Miscellaneous. Dr. Oswald?
Okay, 14.01 is the plan that I just went over at the beginning of the meeting. 14.02 is our 2020-21 district professional development and mentoring plans that are updated annually. 14.03 is our annual agreement with the Lady of Lords Nursing School. They place student nurses with us pretty much every year. 14.04, two job descriptions for consideration, and 14.05 would be our policy, second readings of policies that the board looked at, I believe, earlier this month at the first August meeting. And then 14.06, there were no HIV reports for the last several months. So this just confirms the end of school year last year. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have approval of items 14.01 through 14.06?
No move.
And is there a second to that motion?
So, yes.
And questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yeah.
Ms. Henry?
Yes. Section 15 on our agenda is our second opportunity for public participation. And as always, please state your name and your address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. And again, the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. So as before, I think we'll, if you type your name into the chat box, Dr. Oswald, if you don't mind running this for public participation, I think that works well.
Okay. Mr. Mason? No luck, Rhodes, sorry. We're hearing about every third word, I think. Might want to just type it unless it's super long.
Okay.
How will seniors, I'm sorry, how will senior students be instructed about college application process? They will work with their counselors. The work, the counselors will be available. So at the high school, we'll have the counselors, counselors available remotely to the students. And I would suspect that they will, they usually spend the first several weeks of school kind of touching base with the students, and then they move right into that whole college application process. So that is something that the counselors are certainly aware that needs to be done at the beginning of the school year as well. Good? Mr. Lehman, oops, sorry, Ms. Rhodes, school psychologist, same thing. They are, they will be available at the start of the school year as well. So none of that will change. Their availability will be the same as it was last spring. Mr., somebody else was in there. Hold on a second. Mr. Lehman again.
Okay, Jacob Lehman again, 71 Louna Avenue. Thanks. I just want to follow in the line of questioning that I was engaged in at the beginning, because I think I might have cut it off too quickly. It's very important to me. I'll give you an opportunity to answer again. Also, we talked about staffing, and I understand that staffing is a concern in being able to reopen the school. And, you know, you indicated in your August 18 letter that you're committed to following the science and paying close attention to what happens in schools. And I asked you about metrics, and you said the only metric, the metric right now is my gut. I just want to give you another opportunity. Is there, you know, I, as a parent, is there anything I can look to by way of metric that's going to let me know whether or not schools are going to reopen, or whether or not Collingwood School is going to be allowed to reopen other than your gut?
I don't have an answer to that. It's not often that I come to a board meeting and don't have an answer for every question that's asked. I'm not a doctor. I'm not one of those specialists. I think it's, I think it is irresponsible that the Department of Education is leaving those decisions to the local districts. I think it's massively irresponsible. If you want me to spend the next hour going off on them, I'll be happy to. But they're leaving them to us, and I don't believe that that's the right thing to do. So we are going to take the safe route. We will work with our county health department. We will work with the districts that are around us that are in similar situations. I would not be surprised that you'll see other districts kind of fall into the same path. Maybe not, but I suspect that'll happen. And then we will work together with our, our county Department of Education, your county office of education, as well as our county health department. And hopefully, at the state level, folks will step up because they need to. This has been, quite honestly, an embarrassment. I've been doing this a long time. I have never been in a situation like this where I'm being asked to go way outside my area of expertise. You want to come in and ask me about curriculum and assessment and instruction, I'll talk to you about it all day. But to put the onus on me to decide when it's safe and not safe, and believe that the Department of Education has any clue, it's just not, it's just not accurate. So I wish I could give you a number. I wish there was a number that was, that I could hand you to say, here's what's, you know, here's what's going to determine. But I think we're going to have to work collaboratively with our health professionals, our school doctor, as well as our, our county health department. That's the best I can do for you right now. But I can't give you a number that I'm watching. I don't know that it will be one number.
I appreciate that that's a difficult decision or a difficult place that the states put you in. I mean, just sort of as a follow-up to that, if, if the state allows a school district continue with remote learning throughout the 2020-21, we're in 2020 already, 2020-21 instructional year, if they allow for that, is it your intention to elect the safer route, as you put it, and to continue with remote learning throughout the 2021 instructional year so long as, you know, there's COVID-19 out there and we don't have a vaccine for it?
I don't think that there's anybody in the district who wants to continue with remote learning indefinitely. I think there are folks in the district who are very apprehensive. And, you know, we have not seen what happens when schools are back in session in New Jersey. So New Jersey's had some luck with containing the virus, clearly compared to many of the other states around us. But we've contained that virus partially because schools are not, have not been in session. So once schools begin to reopen around the state or around the region with other states that have, you know, kind of similar numbers to us, I think you'll see whether there's an impact or not. And the worst-case scenario is we were a little too cautious, and we don't see an impact of the schools reopening. And that's a, that's a scenario, I guess, that I have to be comfortable with. The, the, you know, I don't say best-case scenario, but that probably, you know, a different scenario would be that we start to see a spike elsewhere, and then I'll, you know, then we'll know in Collingwood and in Oakland that we absolutely made the right decision. So at this point, I'm going to go the safe route. We're going to see what happens. I think we have a plan in place that slowly reintroduces our staff to our buildings, as well as, and then our students to our buildings. And that gives us time to, to make decisions. And, you know, I think every board member here and also in Oakland, in Oakland understands that it's not ideal for parents. It's very difficult for many of our families, and we feel for that. I mean, I certainly, you know, we developed our whole initial plan because we wanted to try to do what was best for our families. But we need to really be cautious, and I don't know that we want to use our schools, our staff, our students as the test cases for what's going to happen if. So that's where we are right now. I will do my best to nail down those numbers and become, you know, as much of a, get as much knowledge about this thing and what numbers are going to matter the most. I'll do my best as we move into September, but, you know, that's the best I can give you right now. So is it our?
Fairly or unfairly, it's up to you, is what you're saying. Fairly or unfairly, the decision is placed with you.
Okay, then my decision has been made.
All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Or Robin Musiano, I think? Oh, you typed, I'm sorry. Regarding attendance, if a student won't be able to attend a class for some reason, doctor's appointment, et cetera, do we call the office to let them know? Will doctors notice we needed for excused absences, or is attendance not a major concern? I can tell you that attendance is a concern and that we don't want our students to disappear off the map. If you have an appointment, a family commitment, something like that, I would just be in touch with the teacher. I will also tell you that, you know, one thing that we haven't really covered is, let's say we move back into the remote, into remote learning, I'm sorry, into hybrid learning. We move into hybrid learning, and you, somebody, a student wakes up in the morning, isn't feeling well, or a student, you know, wakes up a little bit late and can't get into the school, then what they should do is absolutely jump online. And, you know, even though they quote are supposed to be in front of me or in front of the teacher, if they jump online, that's, you know, they're going to be there. They're going to be counted as present. If they can't be, then I would just reach out to the teacher, particularly if it's just a class or, you know, missing a class or two. I'd reach out to that teacher or two, let them know. The, the recordings will be available of the mini lessons, and the assignments will certainly be available to the students. So I suspect if they do those, then they're going to be fine. You know, we'll work with our teachers. Remember, we haven't really gotten back to our, we haven't gotten with our teachers yet to, to talk through all these issues. But the intent is not to penalize a student who has, you know, appointments and things like that that happen all the time. So in that, in this case, that could actually be more, you know, a little bit more flex, provide a little bit more flexibility and for the students. Ms. Bezaewitz, you're up again.
Okay, so I know the NJSA said that we continue, could continue doing sports, but I know some schools like Westminster, Plainsboro, they said that they didn't want their kids to be doing sports if they could have the option not to. So I was curious if it is likely that our sports are going to get canceled as well, or if you guys are comfortable with continuing them.
I think that we're comfortable with the precautions that are in place because the athletics are outside. We're doing everything right now outside. And I think the band is also, if it hasn't started, we'll start soon, again, outside. So even, you know, there are certain, so yes, quick answer to your question is I don't think we're going to be canceling anything. I think that's really going to rely, we're going to, we're going to lean on the NJSA for that, unless we begin to see, again, some negative, some negative outcomes from our practices. But we've been doing them now for a bit, and, and I think that our students and our coaches have been handling it quite well. So I don't see a change there, but I don't want to promise. I just, that's not expected.
And if they do allow winter sports, which are inside, how do you see our school dealing with that?
We have not even thought about that. I don't, I don't think there's much of a chance that's going to happen. But, you know, I would say that we're going to be much more comfortable with the outdoor sports, unless there's some big change in the, you know, vaccine pops up and, and we're ready to go there. But I don't think you're going to see winter, indoor sports happening anytime soon.
I did not like that answer.
Ms. Powers?
Hi, Dr. Oswald. I just wanted to say in closing, before I left, that we often, you and I, at least once a year, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, don't see eye to eye on some particular topic at some particular time regarding Mason's support. However, I did want to publicly say, you know, I'm always good with, you know, if I have something despairing to say, I'll say it publicly. But when I have a kudos to give, I'll equally share that publicly as well. I just wanted to say that, at this point, I just wanted to let you know, I do appreciate you. I appreciate how you're handling the situation overall. I know wholeheartedly, even when we disagree on a topic or agree on a topic, that at every given point, it's done with what you believe at that point in time is in the best interest of your student, Mason, my child, or the students overall. So just wanted to tell you before I exited, just thank you. I do appreciate you, and I do completely understand how heavy this must weigh on you on a day-to-day basis, and that it's not easy, and that I see from the outside, completely outside looking at, and truly believe that you're doing the best that you can.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. We're like brother and sister. We fight. Good. Keep the sharp. Kim Brooks, Ms. Brooks? He's sitting here in the dark. Kim, you were prepared. When we first made our choice, remote versus hybrid, the plan was very different. We chose full remote, thinking that school would not start in September and be that too many students at once would be unsafe. Now that there's a new plan to bring students with a disability back in earlier, can we change our initial choice? From our original choice, the new plan sounds safer in bringing students back. Yes. Reach out. Just shoot me an email or Dr. McMullin an email tomorrow, and we can make that happen. That's easy. We know things are changing, and we should not hold those decisions. We know things are changing, and we should not hold those decisions against anybody. All right, Mrs. Henry, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you for those public questions. And just in comment to the questions about the metrics and what metrics are being looked at to make these decisions, Dr. Oswald, I think you underestimate yourself when you humbly say that you're going with your gut on this. Going with your gut for you means that you're using years of experience that gives you good insight, and you consult the board, and there was much board discussion surrounding these decisions. So as I said before, as much as these decisions aren't ever going to fit every family, it was based on a lot of your experience and much board discussion. So I would just like the public to know that. Any other comments from board members? And then the final section on our agenda is the adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
And is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.